Ladies and gentlemen, I've got seven o'clock. We're going to get started. I have an opening statement this evening. Two weeks ago this evening, our fire and police department members were dispatched to the scene of a horrible auto accident at the Childers Run intersection with U.S. Route 33, just a mile or so east from here on Quarter H. We received early information that the accident was a bad one with fatalities. We didn't learn until the next morning that the accident claimed two of our community members, Sarah Downs and our own Matt Heinz. They'd been attending a Lions Club dinner at Zix Restaurant. I wasn't acquainted with Ms. Downs, but we all sympathize with her family and friends, and her passing is a tragic loss. Matt Heinz was a BUHS graduate and a Wesleyan alum, having graduated in 1963 after having served for several years in the United States Navy. He graduated from the WVU College of Law in 1966 and was immediately admitted to the bar and began a 30-year association with Coleman &amp; Wallace. Longtime city attorney Bob Wallace immediately recognized Matt's gift for commitment to detail, and Matt became the finest real estate abstractor in our region. Matt was beyond meticulous. Matt, immediately out of law school, began taking on our city's real estate work, and for the ensuing 53 years, applied his gift to detail and performed perfectly for our city. Unlike Bob Wallace, who served as our city attorney for 25 years, and I, who served the same capacity for 32-plus years, Matt was never the guy seen at the council or board meetings, or being the visible legal presence for our city. Matt was the ultimate man behind the scenes. For those 53 years, he quietly worked for our city, taking on tasks that would drive many a lawyer mad. Matt would spend two or three days in the county clerk's office, determined to figure out how a single cemetery plot had been acquired in Hevner Cemetery way back in the 1920s, had passed through a host of estates during the following century. Then, Matt would draft airship affidavits, correction deeds, retrieve documents from other counties and often other states to solve the most complicated of real estate puzzles. He did this over and over and over again, for decades. Matt loved a good real estate challenge. Matt was a terrific teacher. He taught in one of the business law sections at Wesleyan for a decade, but more than that, Matt taught lawyers in our community, myself included, how to abstract real estate titles and prepare title documents. He was the go-to guy for the old Adrian Buchanan Bank, and then later, the First Community Bank, for decades. I learned more about the practice of law from Matt Heinz than from all of my other influences combined. Matt was one of the kindest guys you could ever come to know. He was always friendly and generous with his time and finances. He kept the candy jars filled at City Hall for our gals, who he held dear. They were fond of him as well. Until my kids started having kids, Matt, every year, would drop off birthday and Christmas gifts until they were well into their twenties. He embodied thoughtfulness. Matt was a terrific tennis player, and until recently, when he developed some respiratory issues, you'd find him virtually every weekend up at the Wesleyan Courts. For decades, Matt was the chair of the Buchanan and Lions Club Easter egg committee. And in fact, for a considerable part of that past 50 years, Matt was the committee. It's somehow appropriate that this Saturday, the Lions Club will conduct their annual egg hunt, though I doubt that it'll ever quite be the same without Matt Heinz. As many others would also say, "I love Matt Heinz." He may not be here anymore physically, but let there be no mistaking it. Matt Heinz will forever be a part of this place, in all things City of Buchanan spiritually. We hurt over his passing, and will always miss our beloved friend, his stories that brought smiles to us all, his wealth of knowledge and information, and his genuinely kind character and gracious way. Let us never, ever forget Matt as we grieve his loss this evening. Please join us in our moment of silent reflection as we remember and honor Matt. Thank you very much. Our good friend Gary Evans is here this evening. Gary, would you be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So to move from the melancholy to something more celebratory, I'd like to call upon Dr. Paul Richter to join me up front, if you would. Paul, would you mind coming up front? We're honored to have you here this evening, sir.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation. Whereas the Council of the City of Buchanan resolved during its regular meeting of October 18, 2018, to honor from time to time residents of our Buchanan Upsher community, who perform extraordinary service while embracing the kind and giving spirit of volunteerism, and whereas Buchanan has long championed community service and has recognized persons who have given selflessly for the benefit of our city's fire department, Stockton Youth and Community Center, and police department, but had not, until recently, formally recognized others who generally perform many other acts of service and kindness, and whereas with the 2018 establishment of our Buchanan Volunteer Center, the city council deemed it to be reasonable and appropriate to henceforth recognize our community's most giving volunteers, with previous honorees of the Buchanan Exemplary Service Testimonial, that is the best award, being Amanda Hayes, Zachary Musler, Robin Keough, Shirley Tinney, Bill Nicholson, and Dr. Joseph Reed. Now therefore, I as Mayor of the City of Buchanan pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me, do hereby proclaim as our city's seventh recipient of our Buchanan Exemplary Service Testimonial, Best Award, for April of 2019, to be Dr. Paul Richter. Dr. Richter is one of the original five co-founders of the Buchanan River Watershed Association in 2001. During his 18-year association with BRWA, Paul has vigilantly protected our community's water supply, having spent the past several years administering one of BRWA's large grants, overseeing six acid mine drainage projects, and beginning a seventh totaling $1.7 million in funding. Dr. Richter is a professor emeritus in biology at WVWC. Paul previously volunteered for the Buchanan Meals on Wheels program, operated out of First United Methodist Church, and also assisted in beginning the Upsher Parish House's community garden, having worked with that program for more than three years. Dr. Paul Richter has long helped us all in our BU community to be happier and healthier in countless ways since 1965. I direct the establishment of our city's new best bench and installation of a permanent placard in Jawbone Park to forever honor and recognize Dr. Paul Richter and all past and future honorees of our city's best award. I further urge all residents to join our city's most honored guest, Dr. Paul Richter, his wife Marjorie, his family, friends, and admirers, and me, along with all members of our city government family during our public ceremony to be conducted at 7:00 p.m. on Thursday, April 18, 2019, as we honor our city's seventh recipient of our best award. We all wish Dr. Richter all of the best in his forthcoming retirement. May every resident be mindful of the importance of community service and giving of oneself, and be inspired to give selflessly for the benefit of others, as we pay tribute to the many substantial contributions of our exceptional volunteers, including the seventh recipient of our city's best award, Dr. Paul Richter, and this is given under my hand and the official seal of the City of Buchanan, his 18th day of April, 2019. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
One of the most... You just corrected me. It's chemistry, not biology. We've got to fix that. I only worked with him up to college for 2025 years. Would you like to say a few words? The floor is yours, if you would.
I get 55 minutes, right?
55 minutes. We'll take you all the way to... How about eight o'clock? That's 50 minutes.
I want to thank others who help support. Tim Bjorg Thorne has been with the BRWA for 12, 13 years, and we still have one co-founder on the board, Jim Mitchell, retired state forester in private practice. And we have, of course, other people on the board now who've come in more recently, and I'm looking to their continuing what we've started 18 years ago, so I hope that works out well. I'd like to say that working with Joe Reed on the parish garden was a good experience, but he's continuing working there. And I've worked with Beryl Smith. He was on the board of BRWA for a few years, and of course, he's now in charge of the Sullivanate Authority, which I'm a member, a DEP appointee member, and I've enjoyed doing that also. So I thank everybody in the town and the county who've supported our work. As it says here, we have seven projects, six completed, now well over $1.7 million. I might mention there's taxpayer dollars, so...
We still appreciate it.
But Buchanan City Water is still one of the best buys you can get. No plastic bottles, it's a lot cheaper, and it's safe. It really is.
I explained to Paul that it was... He was at the water board meeting just last week, and he had been in the queue to receive this award for several months. It had nothing to do with you coming to the meeting, but we're always happy to see you twice in a week's period.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. Our next guest is Mr. Gary Evans, who wants to tell us about the PALS program. Gary, you've got the podium up.
Very recolling. Thank you and all the council members for giving me a chance to talk with everybody. Anyone that ever knows me knows that if I'm teasing and picking and joking, it's because I love everybody. And I really... It's so interesting to me because I can't imagine Robbie being in eighth grade, going to Youth and Governor Seminar with me a lot of years ago, and now, Mr. Skinner. It's like, wow! All those lessons were wonderful that were learned, and it is an honor to see that carry on in the Rock County. So bless him. As he can, I'm sure, witness everybody, I'm not known for my brevity, but I'll do my best tonight to do that. With that idea in mind, what I did was not to... I hated always to read, but I did propose a letter and gave it to you all, a little bit of an explanation about what's going on with what we have found in service to our state, to our community, and to our town. So without further ado, on January 14, 2019, a loving mother, wife, and former teacher, Anna Sel Evans, was found to have had stage IV cancer. Her hospital gave her the prognosis, no cure, no treatment, and no hope, just go home and wait. When hope is gone, and the only certain thing remaining is our faith in a loving and caring God, we step forward and stand on the promises. Our family did that. They stood on the promises and began to search for somewhere God would send her for help. Through tears, cares, and sincere prayers, we were led to Houston, Texas, for help at one of our great country's largest cancer centers. Our son Jeremy drove to Houston for the appointment and back home when it was over. We struggled to find transportation. Driving was out of the question. Air transportation was questionable with the shortness of time required for her medical appointments, motel reservations, and high cost of flights. We started frantically searching for a flight. Finally, we located one. Three days before its departure, our reservations were canceled. We had tried others who claimed reduced fares and certain service. However, they all failed, and each at a great expense. We vowed to get her to Houston, even by dog sled if necessary. Two days before her appointment, we received a call from an airlift service, PALS, which is Patient Airlift Services, who told us they could help. Those were some of the most comforting words we could ever have heard. They told us that they could not fly... We could not fly with them because their pilots were too busy on short notice, but they would arrange a free flight on a commercial airline to and from Houston. We boarded that flight in Pittsburgh. After several days in Houston, we contacted the airlift service, and they set up a free return flight. They also arranged for Ubers... I call them Ubers. For Ubers to whatever that means, to pick us up at Houston, take us to our motel, and bring us... And pick us up to the return flight at no cost. After a few weeks of treatment here in West Virginia, we were led to a major hospital and staff in Boston, Massachusetts. We contacted the airlift service that had graciously provided our flight before and asked if it were possible to help once more. Their kindness, comfort, and consideration certainly were an encouragement in discouraging times. They arranged transportation at a corporate jet in Pittsburgh, once again, free. They flew Anna, Jeremy, and I to Boston. We asked if this opportunity were available for people in West Virginia. They explained that their service did not extend to our state. After some very encouraging and productive discussions, we were told that if interest were shown in their flights that they would offer it. We anxiously agreed to do everything possible to publicize and explain their unselfish offer to everyone in our state. We have been spreading the great news at every opportunity and every location that we can find. We pray that the seed of hope offered by PALS through us grows to spread throughout our state. No one needs to ever shrink into a helpless hopelessness because they cannot afford to fly to a distant medical facility for second opinions, new cures, or clinical trials. These flights are offered to patients with serious illnesses and their caregivers. Please, West Virginians, feel our love for you and our love for God, who wants us to share our blessings with each other. Even in the darkest of storms, there is a glimmer of hope. We pray this blessing answers the needs of folks who otherwise may have given up for help. Find comfort, share blessings, love each other. So that service is offered now to here in West Virginia. They'll land at Benidorm Airport. They'll pick up their patients there and fly them to any place on the East Coast of the United States free. It does not cost anything. And if you offer them money, they won't take it. How do they make their money? I have brochures, and Mayor, thank you for putting these out. I know you did some. I have a bunch of them. Please, I'll give you these, if that's okay. Use whatever you can use them for. Spread the word wherever you can. What a blessing that we are be able to be offered this service. The only thing they do is they ask that you verify a doctor's appointment that you have, wherever that is, so this isn't a luxury flight. And it's done on a... Not a commercial jet, but a corporate jet, about six to eight passengers, 550 miles an hour. You're there before you realize you've even taken off. And unbelievably wonderful, kind people. Please understand, this is not about my family, it's not about me. It is about the services offered to them for all of us in a time when a lot of people are in a need that they can't provide that. And sitting around at a hospital and not being able to get help and afford to go someplace is unbelievable when we can offer that. I've been over... I'm spreading the nerve, and you'll see me probably every place. Walmart, I've been to WVU, to Medical Center, to my wife's... If I leave tonight early, please forgive me, she's still in the hospital, UHC, I'm going to go back there. Talked to UHC today, they're excited about it. Davis Medical, they're excited. My only concern was that I did not want any hospitals to think we were taking patients from them to take them to another hospital, and they realize that they can't treat everything, that they can't give some clinical treatments and things that other hospitals can't, and they're very receptive to that. So what... All I wanted to do was to make you all aware, the council aware, Buchanan aware, that this service is available. Take the service, use it where God leads you. Use it where your wisdom and your guidance takes you and takes the people of not only this county, but our town and our nation, first thing. I'll take any questions that you all have.
Good questions, sir, Gary Evans. It sounds like a terrific program. I have to tell you, after all those years when your dad was our camera operator for our council meetings, it's poetic justice that you be here this evening, so.
Well, I think a lot of us have lost a lot of family members. It was cancer, or heart, or diabetes, or whatever, and this is something that can give a glimmer of hope to all of us in a time when we really need that.
We'll mention your being here this evening. Callie Crum and Sam isn't here this evening, but we'll get her to do a press release and put it on our city website. And our ladies of the press, I'm sure, would love to talk with you here in the near future about a possible story, too, so.
I'll bet you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Our next guest is Robbie Messenger. He's our Business of the Month, if you will, and we're excited to welcome yet another new enterprise to town, so Robbie, how's it going down there? I should stick my head in about every other day, and it looks like it's coming along really well down at Jawbone Park.
Going pretty well. Thank you very much, Mayor, and council members for letting me have a few minutes. Won't take up much of your time. For those of you who don't know, my name is Robbie Messenger. I'm going to be opening up a used and new furniture store here in Buchanan, down next to Jawbone Park. It will be named Pops Furniture. I've been working diligently, making the building interior and exterior looking better, and sprucing up the outside today, looking a lot better down there. So excited about my new venture, and I'd like to invite everybody down after we get open, probably in a couple of weeks or so, get inventory uploaded into a new computer system, and things going pretty well.
Just out of time for strawberry.
Don't know if that'll be a good thing or a bad thing, but we'll see.
Well, the fares will be right for it.
Yeah. Like I said, it's not sure if it'll be a good thing or a bad thing.
I bet you it'll generate some foot traffic, anyway.
I think so. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak a few words, and thanks for your time.
Well, we wish you great luck in this new venture, and whatever, however we can help the city all, don't be bashful about asking.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, boss. Double check my guest list. I think Kim Bajorne Thorne was going to... Bajorne Thorne was going to speak on behalf of Paul Richter, but I think she's already left. I do see that Kevin Campbell has signed up to speak to council. Kevin?
Good evening. I'll be brief. I've been involved with the local emergency planning committee for probably five or six years now, and for a long time, I was the only Upsher County firefighter regularly in When Jim Townsend was here, he made a few meetings. But we have a problem with city representation at the LEPC, and I know Matt's got meetings coming out of his ears, but it's essential that the city, police, and fire be represented there. Gloria comes regularly, representing EMS and Doyle from the comm center. But we haven't seen it... I've never seen anybody from Buchanan Police Department at a meeting. I have seen some firefighters on occasion, but these are part of the contingency plans in the works, and this year, they will be focusing on Upsher County and evacuation plans for hazards in our community. Last year, it was done for most of Lewis County. This year, it's already funded to do it for this county. And it's really important that we have the participation of the city, because it's part of our security, and it's important, should a disaster occur, that we get all the FEMA funding we're entitled to. And this is one of those things they look at, is who's been in attendance and who's been working on the emergency preparations.
So what's the name of the acronym stand for?
LEPC is the Local Emergency Planning Committee.
And how many counties is that?
For us, we share a committee with Lewis County, so every other month, the meeting travels from Lewis to Upsher. The next meeting is Wednesday at noon at the comm center.
How many people generally attend?
We generally have between 12 and 20.
One of those meetings that I've attended down at our community and training room, the emergency responders, smaller than the place, I know that you and JB have participated in those meetings with me. I thought that's what we were attending.
No, I think what you're thinking of, Mayor, is just various events that come up. We'll have, for instance, the Strawberry Festival is approaching, and we'll have a variety of meetings leading up to that to establish an IEP for that, where we meet with the fire department, police department, he and Matt's Strawberry Festival.
Mr. Farrell used to have regular meetings that we all participated in.
Right.
And then Mr. Ferry also has conducted meetings, and I've been to probably half a dozen of those.
Between Tabletop and Full Skull exercises, we have regular meetings in that regard as well.
And Buchanan Police, we're involved in the last exercise at the airport. They do get involved in the exercises, but my concern is, and it came up in a meeting, that Lewis County people were complaining that enough Upsher County people weren't participating, so I'm bringing the message.
We'll look into it.
Is this different than what Jeff Harvey has been working to orchest... This is different? This isn't the same?
This is what Jeff Harvey was involved with last year. Last year, Jeff Harvey did a plan for Lewis. This year, a plan needs to be done for Upsher. Don't know if it will be awarded to Jeff Harvey or somebody else. It hasn't been awarded yet, and that's part of why we need to participate.
But this is not the strategic plan for emergency response in this county. This is for evacuation plan for disasters, as well as helping us get all the FEMA funding we should be receiving in the event of a disaster. This is not a response plan. This is a...
Correct.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure, because I understand the difference.
This comes out of the... LEPC came out of the Stafford Act, which is also called the People's Right to Know, which after some calamity, I think in '79, people were injured because they didn't know the potential of harm of things in their community. Now, within reason, they're entitled to not only know it, they're entitled to know what the plans are to deal with it in case of an emergency. And citizen involvement in these things generally helps everybody. We've got a lot of hazards around here, like tanker cars over at the Old Coastal Lumber that don't have any secondary containment around them, and they're a quarter mile from the Buchanan River. It's a hazard that people in the neighborhood are aware of. So getting the citizens involved, along with the police and emergency and county... Sam Nolte regularly comes, Kerry comes, like I say, Doyle, and... But I'm not an active firefighter anymore, so I don't even represent Upsher County firefighters anymore. I still attend because of my affiliation with BRWA.
Are these regular meetings? These are held on a regular time?
Yes.
So is the next one Wednesday at noon?
The next one is Wednesday, and the next one is postponed a week because there were too many conflicts or people this last Wednesday, yesterday.
So these are typically on the...
Typically, it's on the third Wednesday in the month.
Okay.
Jerry?
Does any of the other fire departments in the county, Kevin, attend, or is it like the Sheriff's Department or State Police?
State Police, no. Sheriff's Department, no.
Do any other fire companies?
None of the fire companies in Buchanan have been there at any meetings recently. In Lewis County, a few of the firefighters count.
So it's not...
Sheriff's Department, no.
Do any other fire companies?
None of the fire companies in Buchanan have been there at any meetings recently. In Lewis County, a few of the firefighters count. And sometimes firefighters from Jane Litt.
That's kind of what called all fire companies in Upsher County.
But yeah, for a long time, I was the only one that was ever there representing Upsher County Fire. And I don't represent them anymore.
We'll have a discussion with Chief Gregory and Chief Kimball and see what we can do to participate. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We've got one Wesleyan College student here tonight. Mr. Graham, you want to stand and be recognized? Usually, we give our name, major, on the town.
My name is Elizabeth Graham. I'm from Sophia, West Virginia, and my major is business administration.
There's supposed to be two students here tonight. I guess.
So that means you went to Independence?
I did not.
You did?
I live near there. I went to Greater Berkeley Christian School.
Okay.
So what year are you now?
I'm a senior, but I'm in the five-year program, so I have one more year.
So you have an MBA when you're there?
Yes.
She's in two of my classes, both the undergrad and MBA class. And they're your favorite classes.
At the same time, Colleen?
That's right.
Oh, gosh. You need a reward.
Yeah.
It's torture.
It's torture for me. Department and board reports. First up is our information coordinator, grant researcher, researcher Callie Crum and Sam, who's not here. But Callie's report, that I am not going to read, is in there. We got lots of good things happening and you can read all about it in Callie's report. So we'll go right to Vincent Smith, who's here. He's got a two-hour presentation on voting code enforcement.
I'll bring up the PowerPoint here.
Okay, thank you. How's it going, guys?
I really was kind of, really didn't what I was going to report on. I came to see if you had any questions about the ordinance that the fire marshal mandated that we enact, that Tom has prepared for us, and you're going to do the second reading on it. All they changed was one thing, it was commercial property. But they make us adopt the entire thing over again. So we're still on the 2015. None of that's changed. That's a formality. And Tom thinks the same way I do. If you adopt it, it's in place, why doesn't it stay until we change it to a new one?
Yeah.
But it doesn't work that way. So that's the reason for doing this. Didn't know whether anyone had any questions about that. So I thought I'd come and see if anyone had.
Prefectory administrative thing, huh?
Yeah.
Questions for Vince?
I will say a little bit about, you know, it's coming into grass season. It's construction season. And we always, I see, you know, on Facebook, you get some complaints. People are complaining about properties that, the pride for some property owners, because, i.e. rental property, are given to them by their parents that lived there for years and maintained them, they always looked nice. Now, the kids take them over. For some reason, we've lost that, the pride in keeping your property up. So it's a constant battle to try to get people to conform to what the rest of the community looks like. So, you know, I apologize for you guys getting the comments about deplorable properties.
I apologize for sending them on to you.
But we have gotten some movement, our vacant building ordinance, we have gotten movement there. People are doing things with houses. They don't want to be assessed a fee. So we're getting a little bit of movement there. Not a lot, but we're, I mean, it's working. I will say that. You know, other than that, it's business as usual. If you have complaints, please, you know, forward them to me, get them to me and maybe something that I miss in my travels. But I try not to miss a whole lot.
Just monitor Facebook.
That's the bad part. I don't do Facebook.
Facebook comments.
Everything is sunshine, hollypops and rainbows.
Okay.
Vince, somebody told me the other day that Elkins has taken down 33 structures or houses. Have you heard anything about that?
They have, yes. They've got a pretty aggressive demolition program.
Is that through some kind of grant they received or is that just using their own?
They're using their own general fund money, from what I understand. I mean, and it's costly. We could go, we could use some of that. We have a few properties that are that point now where we need to condemn them and tear them down. But it takes money.
Were you talking about that next week, some of those properties?
I will be, yes, at the housing enforcement board.
Well, thanks for the reminder about the lawn mowing season. There's some folks that need to maybe run that thing this weekend before they do their... And don't put it in the store and put it down in the rain.
Another issue has come up with our toders. It was a great thing. They look good, gets all the garbage, everything what you need. But for some reason, people like to bring them out to the front and then leave them out there. So it's been a constant battle. We've come up with a system. I'll put a tag on it with the ordinance that explains to you why it needs to go in the side or rear yard. And, you know, some people it works on and some that have no pride really don't care. So that's an ongoing battle.
I think one of the other problems we have, Vince, is that with the, for example, Atlantic Coast Pipeline, we have a lot of people coming in from out of town and they're renting and they're not aware of what the ordinances are to keep their rental properties that they are renting in a condition that, you know, we accept or don't accept.
Well, and that should, the landlord should explain to them, hey, this is your garbage day. This is what's required. You know, take your garbage out the day, you know, the evening before, bring it back the next day. I mean, that's pretty cut and dry, I would think, but sometimes it's not.
We'll keep our eye on them.
All right.
Two steps forward and one step back, right?
All right.
Thanks, Vince.
See you next Wednesday.
Jerry Arnold, our public works director. Jerry? Good evening, all. Somebody is officially going on 50 years old as a result of yesterday's exercise.
Fifty?
The son of Guerrero at Los Trankish, that's what I wanted.
I didn't know. I made several thoughts. Brett's working.
Your birthday was yesterday.
Yes.
Well, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Where's the cupcake?
Yeah, you owe us a cupcake for making your birthday.
That's how it works. This week, I've worked in shop walling mostly. I've completed the fall garden for Trader Valley Wall and started on blue wall for the police department. I've had multiple conversations, I mean, this is the topic of the week. I've had multiple conversations with contractors installing the new ADA ramps. And while I know it's an inconvenience, they'll be completed in a couple of weeks. They, you know, we have to go through some pains to get them approved. Again, once it's completed, it will be great downtown. With that being said, I expect sometime early June to do the exercise that we participated in Charlestown after these new ramps are in with the wheelchairs and the long chairs and the different varying degrees of vision goggles. So I will get that scheduled and out. I have some folks with LTAP, they're also wanting to participate and like for the press, as much as the press can come down and participate as well as told, and be no pun intended, but it's an eye-opening experience whenever... And of course, Mr. Thomas knows this, is whenever you have a difficulty with either site or mobility issues, we just don't appreciate it, you know, having all our faculties. Jay Kelly and I have been working on a couple of walk trail extensions that Jay submitted, they're submitting ITAs for state grant funding. Also, under the water department, they continue to work on their early warning monitoring systems. The ROP 20 test did come back good. All of the main lines are in on that project. I think Jay's got that in his report. Sewer department, crew one continues to work on the Brushy Fork Extension, less than a few acres. Crew two made repairs at the bowling alley next door and worked on a force main. The maintenance crew assisted with the bowling alley repair, made the repair at the Western Red Pump Station. And the plant crews doing routine tasks. Nothing new to report under waste collection. Street crew continued to patch potholes and continue to work on the sidewalk on North Locust Street out on the water line project. Under Jay's report, water department early warning monitoring system, phase two, preparing the necessary documents to purchase the necessary early warning equipment for the second station near the raw water intake building. ACP water system improvements, all new water mains have been installed. Mistletoes tie-ins, cleanup activities on both contract one and two have begun. Project should be completed by the end of May. Gateway West Engineering and Survey, the MPD ES permit required for the project was submitted on April 1st. We're waiting approval of the permit and still waiting notice to proceed from DOH. We did get word that to expect it somewhere around the end of June. Water Department, water storage tank inspections, began work on the bid package for the inspections and possibly cleaning of all the water storage tanks in the distribution system except for the Victoria Hill number two, which is the new tank. And if funding permits, cleaning of the tank's interior surface will also take place. The water department demolition of the St. Joseph's water storage tank, began work on the bid package for the demolition of the tank. All materials and equipment above the existing concrete pattern to be demolished and removed from the site. That's all I have, Mayor. Unless there's questions?
Questions, Mr. Graham?
I've got something. Unfortunately, have you been communicating with the people from Wolf Creek?
Yes.
I've had multiple people mention to me that their workers are catcalling women around our town and they feel uncomfortable going downtown. I don't know if anybody else has heard anything about that. But I've seen it with my own eyes once and I've heard a couple of other accounts. So if we can, I know the owner of Wolf Creek and it would be weird for me to approach him because we're competitors in some ways. But if somebody could say something, that would be nice.
I will call and I've been in pretty close contact with their on-site supervisor.
Yeah.
And I will talk to him in the morning.
I appreciate that. I don't want our people feeling uncomfortable going around town. That's not right.
No. And again, sometimes, you know, I've had several conversations this week with folks that, you know, they're not our contractors. And again, it's another one of those projects, and it's not passing blame, but like the McDonald's project, you know, it's a DOH project. But again, we try, as we know, problems exist. We try to address those because they are, you know, our residents and it is partially our responsibility to maintain that. So I will bring that up tomorrow.
I appreciate that.
On an upbeat note, Jerry, I've had a number of people make compliments about the taking care of the potholes. They're really excited that, you know, things are happening in Buchanan.
Jerry, I heard that they cut the fiber for the sound music?
Twice.
Twice?
Hit our light conduits twice. I've had electrician up there all day.
So they're not, they're taking care of it before they pour?
They have butcher's card and the supervisor has butcher's card in his wallet. And he has made those phone calls and yes, which has to come in a patch of fiber before they pour. And the same with our lights, I was telling. And just a little bit ago, the same three lights or the same block on the north side, we now have a short nose lights because of what we did yesterday and we're trying to track that down. It wasn't where they hit it, but I think they may have pulled a connection inside of one of the light poles. So we're trying to track that down again. You know, that's the cost of construction. We try to identify where those things are and ask them to be careful. But keep, in talking with the supervisor yesterday, one of the things that they've encountered on Main Street, and he said, please tell me that all the concrete on Main Street isn't 12 inches thick. And I said, well, I can lie to you, but I know that those, you know, that those curves, those corners were poured heavy when they were poured. And he worked on that corner that they actually hit our conduit in, the corner across from the Chinese restaurant on Spring. He said they hammered on it for 14 hours straight. So he said, now with his timeline of being completed by the end of the month, he said if everything on Main Street's that difficult, he may have to ask for a contract extension. So again, I think he's running into some stuff that he didn't anticipate because these other corners, again, are fairly shallow pores and they've been able to knock those out pretty quick. Their typical is a day and a half from the time they start until the time it's poured back. So that's a pretty good time. But like I said, on Main Street, they're going to be slowed down somewhat because of all the utilities and the thickness of the concrete.
I didn't receive any complaints, but I did have several folks contact me either by email or on Facebook and said that those are the nicest guys, so maybe...
Different guys.
You know, I don't know.
Part of the crews.
And other folks have remarked that it's amazing how quickly, notwithstanding the delay on Main Street right now, how quickly they have affected those ADA intersect points. It's a terrific project. And we will be so much more friendly to senior citizens and those who are challenged with their mobility when this is done in the next two weeks. If we can just keep it together for the next couple of weeks, we'll be fine.
And keep in mind that, you know, the streets can't be paved unless those ramps are within ADA compliance. So if you're having, talking about paving roads, if there's sidewalks on their roads, there have to be approved ramps before they can be paved.
Right. But what I've seen, they're pouring that concrete flush with the existing asphalt. So you're going to have to grind the asphalt.
Yes, whenever.
Whenever you're, and that could...
That is...
And water ponding or...
That is the new ADA standard, CJ. We can't have more than a quarter inch. Quarter inch, no more than a quarter inch difference in elevation.
Jerry, there's a property on Bogus Street, it's not Collins, that...
You sure?
It's Mary's.
I want to talk about the centralization of power on Bogus Street.
But I noticed, I don't know if it's the washing machines emitting water or what it is, but it's coming up through grates and coming out on the street.
Mary.
I'll give you the address later.
Yeah. You give me an address and I will have bumping with family.
And there's another one, I think, on Green Street that's doing the same thing.
You give me, give me an address and we'll check those out.
Okay.
Other questions for Jerry? Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Our Director of Finance and Administration, Abby Jenkins. Sam Beryl.
I'll make a quick comment about those ADA intersects. I have a family member that's disabled. She's thrilled about the project. She uses them just about every day and she's using them for a short time, but she's pretty happy with what the outcome will be from that. Your balance is in your enterprise funds at the ending of March. Waste collection checking, $626,696 with their CD remaining at $57,000. Water board's checking, $360,744 with their CDs remaining at $956,000. The Atlantic Coast Public Pipeline funds that are remaining are $229,000. That's, we paid them out some this month, so that will be reduced next for the report in April. Sanitary checking, $548,158, CDs $213,000. Consolidated Public Works Board, $142,886, and their cemetery CDs, $227,000. Precision Pump received the bid award for electrical upgrades in the amount of $301,333. That's for the water plant electrical upgrades. And they asked for 10% upfront, which the water board approved. Those funds are being paid out of the water bonds for plant upgrades. The Fire Civil Service Commission met and tested three ranking positions. Brian Elmore and Joe Baxa tested for captain's positions and Frank Baxa, they call him Lynn Baxa, tested for lieutenant's position and all three of the firefighters passed those tests. Planning Commission, they just had a meeting this week. They're getting very close to submitting you the 2025 plan to city council. They'll be holding a public meeting on June 10th and will be submitting a final draft to the city, they say, on July 2nd. So just on a side note, what I... So just on a side note, what I've observed from that planning commission, you've got a good planning commission there. They're very, very well organized. The Historic Landmarks Commission met this week and they're still looking at drafts to the city council and regarding design review of building permits in the historic district. So once they get some drafts together, they'll be presenting, presenting something probably within the next few months. Reminder to city council, council with the chamber dinners, April the 25th at the event center at six o'clock and the city council reserved a table for eight. And then I've been working on budgets for all the enterprise funds for the fiscal year 2019-20 and each one of those departments are, have, have looked at a draft so far. In your bills to be approved, I only have a few that I like to point out, the ones that aren't normal. We had a three thousand eight hundred fifteen dollar bill to Reliable Builders for rough framing at the theater. A three thousand five hundred two dollar bill for Tyler Technologies, that's for our core financial and inside transaction fees. Eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five thousand was paid to watch guard for the police department body cams. The fifteen thousand dollar second budgetary expense to the Upstate County Development Authority was sent to them, you budgeted for that last year and we usually pay it in halves and they got their second half payment. Three thousand two hundred twenty-one was spent towards the land and water conservation grant for concrete and then we did concrete for five thousand eighty-three for sidewalks at 131 and 51 South Florida. And I believe that's it.
Questions, Randy? Thanks, Andy. Appreciate you, Alex Officer. Next up is our Police Chief, Matt Gregory. Matt?
Good evening.
How are all the guys doing?
Wow.
Guys and gal.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Just a few things to report on tonight, of course, beyond this, staying steady with Kalia and VIBs and just general law enforcement. Colin began, Colin Coe began employment last Monday with the police department. He's currently undergoing orientation and we do have his application already in to the police academy now, even though the deadline's not until May. So we do anticipate getting him in for the July 15th class, at which he'll be there for 16 weeks of training. So by my count, that should be, and we talked about this last time, about a run at too late into the winter, hopefully he'll graduate at the beginning of November and then he'll begin field training at that point. Police department is currently accepting applications for the youth police academy. As you know, we do that every other year and this year the academy will be from June 24th to the 28th and we'll have middle school and high school aid students at the academy. It's every day that week from 9:00 to 12:00. Have a host of guest speakers come in and a lot of hands-on activities that we share with the youth. We're hoping this year to run this in conjunction with the new junior VIBs program that we're trying to get off the ground and I know we've talked about that a little bit at length concerning the VIBs program itself, but this will be the youth version of that focused primarily on high school aid students. And so we've got the framework for the guidelines and everything in place now and so we're hoping to get this off, off the ground as we run it in conjunction with the youth academy this June. Deadline for application submission is June 7th. We've got applications in schools now and information out on the city sites. If you know anybody that age that would be interested, we highly encourage them to participate. And then finally, this is getting a little head of ourselves, I know that, I went down in the, the agenda with the unfortunate passing of Matt Himes at the vacancy for traffic school and we're prepared to, for a recommendation for that, so I don't know if you want to do that now or later.
Did you want to go over anything with your report? If not, we'll, we'll ask the council to bring F6 to the table.
That's fine.
Council, F6 under strategic is captioned approval of municipal traffic school instructor. For the last many years, it was Matt Himes. I would entertain a motion if we bring F6 to the table.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Rigor and a second by Mr. Skinner. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for the question, bring F6 to the table. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, F6 is now on the table. What is your recommendation, Chief Gregory?
Our recommendation is to replace Corporal Josh Wilson in charge of traffic school. We've spoken with him. He is very interested. He has actually coordinated a number of traffic safety classes for local businesses in the past and we think he'd be a good fit with this program. Doug and I will work with him with orientation and Teresa as well to get him acclimated to the structure of the traffic school as we move forward to the next class in June, but that would be our recommendation.
I would compliment the chief. I think he has done the extra mile to establish niches with virtually everybody in our force, just these specialty areas that further engage and connect all of our officers with the community. So you've heard Matt's recommendation, I'd entertain a motion that we designate Josh Wilson as our municipal traffic school instructor.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Thomas, a second by Mr. Skinner. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. So tell Josh we're happy that he's agreed to serve in that additional capacity.
Absolutely. And we'll, again, we'll coordinate Teresa as we move forward in that regard.
Thanks, Matt.
Mayor, that's all I have tonight. Unless there's questions?
Questions for Chief Gregory? Tell the guys to be safe. Every time I just live five doors up from the public safety complex and it doesn't make any errors whether it's, you know, 12 o'clock, noon or midnight, I always get antsy and oftentimes I'll go down to greet trucks when they come back or the car cruisers pulling in to make sure everybody's okay. So tell them to be safe.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much. See you, Attorney Tom O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I've got a number of things that I've been working on to report for you. There've been several letters of agreement that we've executed, the mayor has executed in the past couple of weeks, particularly in some of these matters were brought for you in the previous meeting, but the letters have been signed and, and returned for Day Trip and Adventures and their use of city property down by the Wood Street Boat Dock for the West Virginia Service Dog Support Group Association and their use of the, of the dog park to conduct basic canine obedience classes later this summer in August and early September, as well as with the Elkins Volunteer Fire Department. In the case of the Day Trip and Adventures and the Service Dog Support Group Associations, can be clear, those are non-exclusive use agreements. That is, if there is another party that wishes to use city property in a similar matter, they will have the same, they will be offered the same opportunity on the same basis that's been offered to, to those other groups. And finally, we're working on one for Pops Furniture and Mr. Messinger, who was here earlier, with respect to an improvement to that property that needs to be, needs to take place, in which we can discuss later. Other correspondence.
What kind of, what kind of improvements to property?
Well, he needs to put on a new stairway, exterior stairway for ingress and egress. Problem is that the property line butts up against the building and so we're going to enter a property use agreement for.
A city right, a city.
Well, it's not exactly a right of way. It's more like a, it's more like a temporary use agreement because we are reserving the right to access that property at any time that we need to. So if we have to, the Works Department has to put a line through there that that, any improvement that's built could theoretically be subject to demolition.
Is it on the backside of that building?
On the front side, it's where the, it's where the parking lot is for job home.
Consolidated Public Works Board, you're getting already.
Oh, okay.
Other correspondence has been drafted, as do the Strawberry Festival and their ABCA special event license application. We are waiting for their application to be carried through there. They have what they need from us, the ball is in their court, we're just waiting for them. And today I received a draft of the Gateway West Phase Two construction agreement that we began reviewing and ensuring that it is in good final form for the city's signature. Reported the deed for the Island Avenue property that the council adopted the resolution of exceptions for last week and there've been a number of construction storm or rights of way that have also been recorded. I have one matter under strategic that I can come back for later. Other than that, I'd be happy to take questions. That's my report.
Questions for Tom? Thanks, Tom. It's been a busy couple of weeks. Geez.
Okay.
Appreciate the good work. Correspondence and information, boy, you've got the slowest stuff in your packet, members of council. You've got, these are reminders, we've talked about these the last couple of meetings. We have more rescheduled meetings than I can ever recall in my entire time with the city. The first one, Coming Up Fast and Furious, isn't that a movie? I think it is. The, the meetings that would have been on Thursday, the 16th, will be held on Tuesday, the 14th, both sanitary board and city council meetings. So note on your calendars, we've moved them up a couple of days. We've done this for the past great number of years. Then when we get to West Virginia Day, which also is on a Thursday this year, we again are moving sanitary board and city council up two days from June 20th to June 18th. And then the Fourth of July is also on a Thursday this year. So we're moving the July 4th meetings of waste collection and the city council meetings to Tuesday, July 2. There's a proclamation in your packet regarding Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month and also a separate proclamation for Children's Memorial Flag Day. There's the report from the Upstate County Commission concerning cat and dog activity out at our animal shelter. There's a press release regarding the passing of Matt Himes. There is the West Virginia Chamber of Commerce Buchanan fact sheet, and I'll hit the pause button. Did you want to say something about that, Mr. Skinner?
Well.
You forwarded that to us and it was a great, hugely complimentary piece on.
It was. The West Virginia Chamber of Commerce has entered into promoting the communities around the state that are worth visiting, that have, that have a lot going on and that are on the upward swing and they chose Buchanan. Buchanan's in the company of Charleston Huntington Morgantown Wheeling Lewisburg and the piece is excellent, really. It points out all of the things that we do very well and it flatters us nicely. So I just, when I received it from them, I forwarded it to you and asked if it'd be put in the packet and.
Good stuff.
I could forward it to Callie in full color and she may be able to put the PDF on our.
That would be a great one.
On our site.
Yeah. If nobody, you got to tune our horn occasionally, right?
Yep. It's nice when others tune it too, so.
You have a thank you letter from Mayor Van Broughton at the City of Elkins regarding the use of our fire truck. There's a letter from a resident that was complaining about the walk trail restroom facilities, but we also got a thank you letter regarding the outstanding cemetery mowing and maintenance which was adjourned this year. So you take the, good with the bad, right? The consent agenda consists of three items. The approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of April 4th and the special meeting at which we laid the levy on April 16th. The approval of our building and wiring permits and the approval of our, the payment of our general fund bills. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Rylands.
Second.
A second by Mr. Thomas. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I will call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Strategic issues for discussion and vote and we'll bring Tom back up for a second reading on ordinance 436, adoption of the modified state building code that Vince also talked about under his comments a little bit ago. Tom, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I mentioned for the benefit of council, given the, the time deadline that has been imposed on the city by the state fire marshal and the decision of the council on first reading of this ordinance two weeks ago, that this has been amended to be an emergency ordinance, so it will take effect immediately upon its adoption, should it be, should it be adopted this evening. I will read it by caption. Ordinance number 436 of the City of Buchanan and ordinance amending prior ordinances of the City of Buchanan by providing for the adoption of the West Virginia State Building Code set forth and defined by Title 87 Series 4 of the Code of State Rules as amended and declaring an emergency. Of course, and declaring an emergency is a charter requirement for any ordinances that are passed on an emergency basis. The emergency being the very short window of time that the fire marshal office has given the city in which to adopt this new standard and maintain the viability of all of the, of the city's adopted building codes.
Consistent with what Tom has said, Article 4 states pursuant to Section 16 of the Charter of the City of Buchanan, the city council does unanimously declare that public health and public safety demand the declaration of an emergency and the adoption of this ordinance from that an emergency is hereby declared. This ordinance shall take effect and be in full force immediately upon its passage by the council and city of Buchanan on April 18, 2019. It's one of these rare exceptions to the rule that ordinarily you got to have at least 30 days before an ordinance can be effectuated. I would entertain a motion that we approve on the second and final reading ordinance 436.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner, a second by Mr. Rigor. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. F2, discussion of city to approach the West Virginia Division of Highways regarding reduction of speed limit along Quarter H from about the Hampton End to the Keesling Mill Road exit. There was an outpouring of remarks, emails, Facebook posts, many folks who grieving with the rest of us over Matt Himes and Sarah Downs' passing, but begging the city to please again reach out to the DOH and ask for consideration of the lowering of the speed limit, at least from Brushy Fork Road out to Children's Run or even Keesling Mill. I would tell you that this was a, a pet project and a constant gripe of former Mayor Kenny Davidson, who's, one of his very best friends is Harry Berkstrom, who's like the number two guy with the DOH. And Kenny Davidson could not get the DOH to consider lowering the speed limit or any other installation of devices that might get people's attention to reduce accidents. I would tell you, and those of you who are familiar with the decades of Quarter H development, the Federal Department of Transportation has predicted that when Quarter H is completed, the traffic on Quarter H will increase by 330%. Think about that for a minute. Three and a third more cars for every car that we presently have.
So we have 12,000 right at Route 20 right now.
It's, it's going to be.
So that would be.
Exponential increase.
Thirty-six thousand.
It's, it's going to get worse and we, we could keep turning the deaf ear and the blind eye to these situations or we could be more assertive and vigilant and perhaps appropriately honoring those, the many folks who we have lost on US Route 33 over the number of years that the highway has been developed. So what's, what's the will of the council? I'd like to hear from the council and if appropriate, we'd entertain a motion to at least do a letter to the commissioner of the DOH.
I'll make a comment, David. I think Jerry, I think at the water board meeting made a comment that he had been at a meeting where they were going to do some further studies at both Keesling Mill and Children's Run. And I'm not sure dropping the speed limit is going to do exactly what we want to have done. Isn't, isn't there a stoplight when you're going into Elkins at, for Billington?
Crystal Springs exit entrance, yes.
I, I think, I mean, this is just my own opinion, that a lot of people don't obey speed limits and that it may be advantageous to put a light either at Children's Run or, or Keesling and that would have an effect of reducing speed by everybody and they're not going to take off like mad people, you know, they're going to hopefully go at a reasonable speed through to Brushy Fork. And I just, my own personal opinion, there's got to be more than just dropping the speed limit, it's got to be coming to a stop at either Keesling Mill or Children's Run.
Yeah, I think it's just inherently built into this style of highway where you can.
I think it's just inherently built into this style of highway, where you can, you know, there's no entrance ramp, no merging lanes, and you're trying, if you're trying to cross across both lanes, and you stop in the middle, it's, and it's, and these intersections get more and more traffic, you know, crossing traffic without anything more than a stop sign, it's, it's a design flaw, so to speak, in this type of highway, but you couldn't have accessed all the roads if you needed to with ramps. It would have been cost prohibitive, but...
Chief Gregory is here. Matt, thoughts on Brushy Fork, Children's Run, Keesling Mill? And here for...
Yeah. Mayor, I didn't endorse any kind of traffic control out there just in the last couple of decades or so. In my experience, I've seen a number of fatalities along that stretch, and for those accidents that haven't resulted in fatalities, I've seen a number of very bad accidents that could otherwise have been accidents. Some of which, some of the worst ones I've seen are Brushy Fork, and we have a stoplight there. And a lot of it, in many cases, is because people are going so fast, and a lot of times it's large trucks, and they can't get stopped for the stoplight. They're trying to beat the light, and inevitably ends up in a T-bone collision, which ends in a chain reaction of a number of cars being hit, and I've seen some really bad accidents in that regard. So, I've long been of the opinion that as development continues in, along Quarter H, and as it continues, and we know it's not going to stop, it's just going to continue to grow, that it needs to constantly be reassessed, and we need to look at it from, from the perspective of safety first and foremost, and just to look at all the options of what can be done to make it a safer area for those that traverse our city. And just given what I've seen, you know, certainly speed's been the factor with a lot of different accidents out there, fatality and otherwise.
What's, what's the state use as their case for not, you know, responding to our request? I mean, are they saying there's not enough traffic at these intersections, or what's...
I think typically, yeah, and just based on the one traffic control, like at Town and other, other areas. I know one of the primary stipulations is the volume of traffic that the state looks at for, you know, stop signs versus traffic lights, and I'm sure the same criteria is held for the board.
As far as reducing the speed limit for this section, I mean, did they, I don't want to use this to bring up Somersville, but I mean, that they've reduced that...
Well, it was the same mentality, you know, Somersville developed a long Route 19.
Was that reduced accidents?
Right. Well, and that was the, the idea, was if the, if the speed limit remained the same through Somersville, on that part of 19, and you have that much more traffic going, coming and going off of the, off of the main road and accessing these businesses, it makes for a much more hazardous situation if they're going faster. That was the mentality behind it.
You have to consider this, too. There are eight non-exits that are exits in Buchanan. And what I mean by that, Main Street and West Virginia Route 20 do not count in the count that I just came up with. But, from Red Rock Road to Keesling Mill Road, there are eight places where you cross the highway to enter Buchanan. One of the unique things about Buchanan is we are situated very close to this highway. Morgantown, Fairmont, Clarksburg, Weston, and Elkins are all, their cores are all situated two or more miles away from the interstate junctions. We, this, this road basically goes right through Buchanan, and all of those intersect points have their issues. They all have blind spots. Keesling Mill has a blind spot, the upper Children's Run has a blind spot, lower Children's Run has a blind spot, even Industrial Park Road, and even Morton Avenue all have blind spots in certain, there's certain elements about every exit that aren't quite right. I think it would also be interesting to look at, why was Interstate 79, why was the speed limit on Interstate 79 dropped in, in the Clarksburg area from 70 to 65, but it's not dropped in Marion County where there are several Fairmont exits, and there are several Fairmont wrecks every day? Why is it still 70 on I-68 and I-79 around Morgantown? It would be interesting to see why, why they dropped it there and how they went about doing it, because my, I wonder if it was a local request to do so, because there's no more traffic on I-79 in Clarksburg that there is in Fairmont or Morgantown. So, it's interesting why it's 65 from Meadowbrook Mall to Ann Moore, and has that helped reduce accidents in that area? And could we use the same plan of action as to how they went about getting it to 65? If, if it was a local push, I think that would be something worth asking, because it's, it's just interesting how these speed limits have been, have been drafted. But, along US Route 19, south, from Somersville through Fayetteville, through Oak Hill, the speed limits are all reduced in all of those towns. You drop to 50 in both Somersville and Fayetteville, and 55 in, in Oak Hill. You know, the turnpike from Beckley to Charleston is 60 miles an hour. It's not 70. So, I, I just wonder how, how it's all developed and how it's all determined. And I, I think that we should, I think we should ask for a study of this area.
And consideration of traffic speeds, or...
Right.
Or traffic control devices, or whatever.
The above.
I think that if we actually got statistics for the last five to 10 years of how many fatalities there have been, and how many really bad wrecks because of speed in this area, you'd be absolutely surprised how many, and that should have some kind of impact in going through with the study, because I think we do need to reduce the speed.
Well, I can tell you, I mean, I'm, I'm young and an alert driver, and I drive a lot, and I have seen many near misses along this road, coming back into Buchanan from Elkins and Weston, and I have even almost pulled out in front of somebody at Keesling Mill, because it, you, certain times of day, if it's, if it's 5:00 in the evening and it's, you know, you're getting, you're getting close to fall or getting into spring, the sun sits right to, just to your west. If you're, if you're coming from the old 151, the sunball is right there, and it is very difficult to see the eastbound traffic. It is. And if you're coming from Triple L Mart, it's hard to see coming back toward Buchanan if you want to, if you want to cross the road.
So, and the problem is, I disagree with Dave Thomas on this one. When, when the speed limit is posted at 65, we all know people are going 70 to 75. So, that's where you get into trouble. If we drop that down to 55, they're probably not going to get ticketed for going 60. But, if you're a already precarious speed limit, that has got to be contributing to these accidents.
I believe people do not anticipate the speed on the interstate. Because when you're, when you're coming, when you're coming from a two-lane road, and you're going 50 to 55 miles an hour at best in most places, because they are curvy, I, then you're approaching a divided highway where the speed limit is 65, and you're right, it's typically over 70.
Well, and there's people that, and I don't, I hate to keep harkening back to the Matt Himes, Sarah Downs accident, but that truck driver was from Texas.
Mm-hmm.
And you get people, the more that Quarter H is completed, the more that it is going to be used by people who are not familiar with our area. And they just assume that if the speed limit's 65, we'll set it on 72, and they go ripping and tearing down the road, and...
Well, we don't want to have the reputation that Somersville had years ago. That's not what we're going for, but...
Absolutely not.
I mean, we probably do need, like, I, I think asking for a study, for them to come in and analyze that stretch of road from mile marker nine to mile marker 15 would, would be, you know, I, I believe that we would be advantageous in asking for that.
Other thoughts on the matter before we...
Who would have the accident records for it?
Any accident that, that any law enforcement agency takes, we file on a software program known as Report Beam. Report Beam is a statewide program. It's uniformed all police departments, and the reason behind that is because DOH was partner in creating the, the software, and they do have access to the stats through the software, because every time we upload a report, it goes to a server in Charleston.
Chief Gregory, we're about to make a recommendation. What, if you could arbitrarily determine what the mechanism that we were to recommend would be, what would you do?
Well, I, I agree with Robbie. I think at least a study needs done at this point. Look at, look at the, look at the current situation, gain access to the statistics, look at everything globally, and take that into consideration. I don't know that stoplights are the answer, I think.
My fear is that we're choosing to set that...
I think the speed is probably where you need to start, and I'll say that, because you spoke right to the point, Robbie. It's the design of the intersections, and when you mix that with the volume of traffic and the differences in speeds, it can lead to some pretty bad consequences sometimes, which I've seen in various... Because, to be quite honest with you, and with all those together, I've long said between Keesling Mill and Red Rock Road are among the dangerous, the most dangerous intersections in the county, for those reasons.
So, would the council endorse the idea of my collaborating with Chief Gregory to draft a letter that would go to the Commissioner of the DOH, asking at least for this study to be adopted?
I'll, I'll motion to that.
I'll second.
Well, that was a, we got, boom. One motion in five seconds.
Yeah. And, and I think the, the commission is doing the same thing, or at least I would work with them, David, because, I mean, they...
Well, I'll copy them on our letter.
Yeah.
And if you want, I can, I can let the council look at the letter for us, maybe?
I just think we should, we are, we would be better off to be more open-ended and to be specific, to say we either want a light or we want 55, because I think if we do that, I think we're going to close doors, and they're just going to say, well, no. I think we should ask them to do the study, and that way, we're, we are being proactive here. We recognize the issue, and we want the DOH to recognize an issue, too, and come back with what, what they see as a, as a solution.
You heard Chief Gregory recommend this course of action. I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? I've got to call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. We'll get something together here in the next few days for you all to take a peek at. F3, the approval of the auction list for sale of miscellaneous surplus city equipment and vehicles. Ambby, you want to speak to that?
I think I gave you the list last time. There's about 20 pieces of equipment need to be auctioned, and that auction will probably take place around May the 10th, and...
Ambby did give that to us last time, and she's also shared with various boards.
I'll make a motion to...
Yes, and it's in the packet tonight.
It's in the packet tonight. I have a motion. Got it, Ambby.
I was just going to mention the, the fire truck is in there that is being pulled down right now, so potentially we're going to have to pull it up for that one a bit.
Or just go to tell them to go to Elkins and pick it up. I'm just kidding, a little joke. I have a motion by Mr. Rigor to allow us to sell some of this miscellaneous surplus stuff for the city. I have a second to his motion?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Skinner. Is there discussion on this motion? Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. F4, the approval of financing for the replacement of our computer server here at City Hall. You want to speak to that, Ambby?
You may want to table that tonight. I contacted three local banks and the vendor, and I got responses from two. The, one of the banks answered me real quickly, and then the vendor answered me. So, I don't know if you want me to wait two more weeks and see if the other two would happen to, I got one good rate and one not so good rate.
What rate have you gotten so far?
I don't want to say that. If you want me to wait two weeks, I don't want to play the cards.
What's the total amount, Ambby?
Uh, the $52,000 for the server. It's not cheap.
How much is it?
For three years is what I was going for, so we'll have it paid off pretty quickly.
I have a motion to table by Mr. Rigor. Can I have a second to his motion?
Second.
A second by Pam. Well, I got to watch, watch my name.
Buckley.
She's going to slug...
But she's not a member of council, because it doesn't say that on her...
What do you mean? It says council on it.
It didn't say council on it.
Oh, you're out. I have a motion in a second.
Ambby, I mean...
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. We'll put that back on the agenda for May 2. F5, the approval of address changes on Chancery Street. Jerry presented that to us at the last meeting on April 4th. Do you want to speak to any further to that, Jerry?
It was, we, at last meeting, we, council approved sending out letters. We sent out letters to all the affected property owners and asked them to attend the meeting. They had objections to the address change, and denied it should be one approval to go ahead and make, affect those changes.
And we haven't gotten any objections.
Absolutely. No calls, no...
I entertain a motion that we affect the address changes on Chancery Street.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Skinner. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Rylands. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. We should have asked Gary F. and C. F. for all those properties on Chancery Street. Okay. We've already acted on F6, the appointment of Josh Wilson as our municipal traffic school instructor. Takes us down to F7, the approval of the insurance committee. We got a committee for everything else, and my suggestion is, is that Councilman Skinner, Ambby Jenkins, and myself be the insurance committee. We don't, won't act as a body, we will just look at stuff relative to these insurance quotes that are coming in, and then make recommendations to the full council.
Could we, could, would it be, could we add Councilman Thomas?
Uh, we could. Dave, you want to serve on that committee?
Sure.
So, it would be Skinner, Thomas, Jenkins, and myself. Sound good?
I'll make a motion to that.
I have a motion by Mr. Rigor, a second by Mr. Rylands. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. The approval of the Upshur County CVB City Representative, the reappointment of Mary Alba, who depending upon how you act upon this request from the CVB, would also be the treasurer's secretary, I forget. It's one or the other. It's, there's an email in there.
Heck, she's not here, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Skinner, a second by Rigor.
That's right, right back at her.
Motion by Skinner, second by Rigor. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Comments and announcements. Mary Alba? Nope, nothing. Pamela Buckley? Boy, I got to get used to that one. That's, that's going to be tough.
Nothing this time.
Huh?
Nothing this time.
Nothing this time? Mrs. Buckley?
That's right.
Mr. Rylands?
Good.
Mr. Skinner?
Chamber meeting is this coming Thursday. Are you happy to have everybody there?
Is it Thursday or Friday?
Thursday, 25th.
Oh, my God, I had it down for Friday.
Well, you better change your schedule.
Wait, is that that dinner?
Yeah.
That's that dinner, yeah, that.
Not this, not this.
I'll be there.
You obviously have not spent any time at the chamber office.
It's the 25th.
It's a 25th.
It's the 25th.
25th.
I don't know why I was thinking that was Friday. Uh, Mr. Thomas, what you got for us?
Nothing except one thing. Christie Tunny called me about a week or two weeks ago about the, she had heard that Mr. Skinner and I were supposed to be involved in the, something, the census.
Yes, would you like to give a census report?
And Robbie and I were not here, I think, at that meeting.
That's why it felt so good to do it.
There's a moral to that story.
But, what, what's the deal?
You got to contact the federal government.
You were duly nominated, according to Robert Rosenborn.
Everybody, it was unanimous vote.
And Robbie, you weren't here, were you?
No, I was sick.
Yeah. Okay, and I was not here.
Don't ever get sick again, buddy.
The motion carried unanimously, so just do your job.
But what the hell are we supposed to do?
Let the men reflect, let the men reflect that Mr. Thomas is excited to serve on the census.
That's the way to keep rocking fuck that.
They were just supposed to be bored and doing their thing.
Can I refuse myself some, some of the oldest council members?
No, no, that's...
We kick on old people, we don't say...
Who do we talk to, David?
Well, uh...
There's all those late people out there.
Ambby's got the, like, young ladies' contact information. We'll hook you up.
Mr. Thomas would like to contact him.
Yes.
He's the precinct head for his, for his district.
She's a very nice lady. You'll, you'll do well with her. I mean, uh, getting a deeper here by the... I mean, you're getting a little deeper here by the minute. Mr. Rigor, what you got for us?
No problems.
That's good. I have, I have nothing to say publicly, really. But I do have three or four relatively expeditious executive session matters to take up.
Second.
I have a motion, man, they want it here by 8:45, you know what I'm saying? I've got a motion by Rigor and a second by Buckle. Is there discussion on the motion to adjourn into executive session? For the press, there won't be any action taken. These are just update matters on personnel, property and our annual honorary awards for May 15 through 7.
Take care of where the real meeting is going to be.
I have a question. Who made the second? Robbie was first, but who seconded the motion to send a letter to the DOH requesting a study? Because I heard like three.
I've got it here.
Was it Pam?
I couldn't.
I have.
He did it.
Everybody jumped on it at the same time.
Skinner, Thomas.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, the senseless guys.
Did you say the senseless guys? That's all I got, guys. I think we're ready to go into executive session. Thank you all for being here.
Y'all have a good weekend.
We'll see you.
Happy Easter.
We'll see you on May 2nd for another show.